Chairman, if I could go ahead and proceed with the roll call.
Yes.
Roll call vote. Roll call for the October 4th Planning Commission meeting. Durante?
Present.
Fols?
Present.
Rappaport?
Present.
Sharp?
Present.
Spezak?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Wilson?
Present.
We have a floor. Thank you. Approval of minutes.
Approval.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Spezak, supported by Commissioner Ann Wilson. Roll call place. Roll call vote to approve the September 4th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Durante?
Yes.
Fols?
Abstain.
Rappaport?
Approved.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Ann Wilson?
Yes.
Six-zero, the motion carries.
Thank you. At this time of our meeting, if there's anything that is not on our agenda that you'd like to bring before the commission, this would be the time to do it. All right, we'll move into our first case, which is case 2228, which proposes the land division and combination on South John Hicks.
Thank you, Chairman. So this is a proposal, let me just go over here, sorry, to split property into two equal-sized parcels and combine one of the resulting parcels with the existing residential properties on either side to the north and the south. The subject property is located in a single-family residential district, shown on your screen, it's outlined in yellow. The approximate boundary of the split is outlined in red. It's at the southwest corner of the city, south of Palmer, between Anan and South John Hicks. The site in yellow here comprises of about 40,000 square feet, and again is zoned R1. The site is currently undeveloped, grass planted, and again, the resulting parcels, as you can see on your screen, are going to be exact same size, and they are going to be combined in this fashion here, with half of this rectangular piece going to the northern property, and half of this southern piece being combined with the southern property. So there's a division and a combination occurring here at the same time. The frontage of this parcel in yellow that's being split is currently 120 feet, and that leaves about 60 feet for each parcel to the north and the south. And that's all I have. The Administration and Planning Department are recommending approval of this petition. Thank you.
Thank you. The petitioner here would like to come forward and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Don Raymore. I'm just one half of the other half. He didn't show up.
Okay.
Because he was working.
You can speak on your half, and that's good. So this is just a division, and half will go to east.
Yeah, I've lived in my home for 20 years. I've been trying to get that land, and finally, it came up, a little more than what I wanted to spend, so I talked to the neighbor, they were agreeing, we didn't want a neighbor, so that's why we're going to buy it. We bought it together and going to split it in two.
Very good. Is there anybody on the audience like to speak on this? We'll open it up to the commission. Commissioner Wilson?
Good evening, sir. I think this is a pretty good split, because whoever this is on the right side, they can finally get in their driveway.
If you're facing it on the right side, yeah, that's the new neighbor. Actually, yeah, if we went and did this, if somebody would have bought the property, that fence would have been right on his.
Right down his driveway.
And I think that's kind of how I got him to go ahead and do this with me, though.
Right. So I think this is a very good split.
Yeah.
I really do. I think one of my colleagues has a question or wants to make the motion. Well, there are no questions.
I have questions.
Question?
But if you want the motion, it's all yours.
Oh, no, go ahead.
Mr. Rappaport?
I guess this is probably best directed to the Administration, and this is mostly a matter of curiosity. The lot that is in between these two properties, is there a particular reason why it hasn't up to this point been purchased and/or developed? Is the lot too small, really, to effectively use? So it's not too small to use, someone could develop, build a home. It does meet the requirements for the R5 zoning district for minimum lot size requirements. Someone could build a nice home on there with the setbacks, with being able to comply with the setbacks. No particular reason that I know of, just a private market in this case. Sounds like this gentleman purchased it. I do have an agreement signed by the neighbor as well. They're doing this in conjunction with each other, so. Okay, well, that is good to know that our citizens are being quite neighborly about this whole matter, and I personally have no objections. I think that this should go forward.
Commissioner Wilson, are you finished, sir?
And I will cede the floor to Ms. Wilson if she would like to make the motion, or I will retain it if she insists that I do.
Commissioner Wilson.
I will make the motion to send.
Very good, I cede the floor.
Pardon? I would make the motion to send case number 2228 to the City Council with a recommendation of approval.
Point of order, it's a public hearing.
Okay.
It is not a public hearing.
Oh, I don't have a star on mine.
It's not a public hearing.
It is not, not a public hearing.
Very good, then, my apologies.
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Wilson, supported by Commissioner Williams. Roll call place.
Roll call vote to approve the land division and combination at South John Hicks, parcel Motion to approve. Roll call vote.
Durante?
Yes.
Fols?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Sharp?
Yes.
Spezak?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Seven-zero, the motion carries.
Thank you, thank you. Moving to our next case, which is a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for coming. I'm sorry. Good luck when you go to City Council.
Yeah, thank you.
You'll not have any problems.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next case is a public hearing for proposed ordinance amendments to chapter 110 entitled zoning. Commissioner Ayew.
Thank you, Chairman. So just a little bit of background here. As you all know, I think we talked about this back in July, maybe, or August, was the Planning Commission's first introduction of what the City Council was going to be doing. There was a ballot initiative last year by the citizens in Michigan to put on the ballot a question whether the state should legalize adult use in the state, and that has passed, as everyone knows. Within the past three or four months, the City Council has held a series of study sessions, about 10 of them, and has created a new chapter to put in the Code of Ordinances, to adopt a marijuana businesses' control ordinance, to allow certain marijuana businesses in the city to regulate them, hours of operation, odors, sign controls, where they should be located, how the police security plan is reviewed, how things are reviewed administratively, and things like that. So the Planning Commission's duty in all of this is to review and make a recommendation on a series of zoning ordinance amendments as it relates to land use. Part of the 10 City Council study sessions, and they were all over the place in the beginning, but towards the end, it was really buttoned down to allow only eight facilities to operate within the city. These are the eight here on the screen, up top in the first portion, it's hard to read for people in the audience, I'll try and zoom in. I'll read the eight here in a moment, but this ordinance says, if you have reviewed ordinances in other cities, is more of a conservative approach, allowing eight throughout the city, and not scattering them, well, not scattering them, but scattering them throughout the city, not to have a concentration and things like that. We don't know how marijuana businesses will, if they will, impact the city at all, or neighboring zoning districts and things like that, so we thought we would scatter them, instead of let them kind of cluster in certain areas. So to wrap this up, we're allowing eight different license types to be issued in the city, two of which will be reserved for provisioning centers and retailers, and provisioning is the medical terminology, retailer is the adult use terminology. That facility can operate both licenses if it chooses to, however, we will only have two of these types of facilities. One is reserved between the north side of Ford Road and the north boundary line of the city. One will be reserved for south of Ford Road to the south boundary line of the city, and those are for two standalone retail facilities. In addition to that, the retail facilities will have to be 250 feet away from any residential zone property, that includes all the R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, R6 districts. There's the midrides, the townhomes, the multifamily districts, and the mobile home park districts. Those are all residentially zoned, so that applies to those as well. 1,000 feet from any pre-existing school, and 5,000 feet from any other marijuana business, and this is all measured from property line to property line at the nearest point. Phew, sorry. So moving on, one license shall be reserved for a safety compliance facility. It's similar to a small type medical office, but more so operating inside as a laboratory to be able to test product, THC content, materials inside of the marijuana and things like that. That facility can operate in any of our zoning districts, commercial office or industrial. Again, there's only one, and they have to comply with all of the distance requirements that I just mentioned. So one, the other license type out of eight is reserved for a marijuana microbusiness. That is a unique grow type slash retailer slash processor, all under the same roof, able to grow, I believe it's 450 plants, don't quote me on that, I think that's the maximum amount of plants that they can grow inside of a facility for a microbusiness. And that's reserved for industrial zoning districts only, and the 1,000 feet from a school applies for that. One license for a secure transporter. A secure transporter is probably going to be more so related to vehicle storage, however, we are requiring in the chapter ordinance that the City Council is reviewing, the operation or building or occupancy of a building on site, and we're not letting people just store cars at a random parcel and calling it a day. So someone actually has to occupy a building, use it as their office, in addition to being able to park cars. That is also reserved for the industrial zoning districts only, and again, only one license type with the 1,000 feet distance separation requirements. The final three business license types are reserved for co-located businesses, and these are businesses similar to microbusinesses, but on a larger scale, where the grow, the processing, and the sale can all happen under one roof. These are only permitted in the industrial zoning districts with the application of the 1,000-foot distance requirement from a school. That's a summary of the zoning. Part of the codes that we've drafted so far, the City Council is reviewing the 17-page document that is going, the Code of Ordinances, that's chapter 27, that's the marijuana businesses' control ordinance. At this time, right now, we are reviewing the zoning ordinance amendments and where these facilities will be placed, and what zoning districts, and just as a final thing to wrap this up, all of these are going to be special land uses, so they will all have to be reviewed by the Planning Commission, at a public hearing. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll open up to the audience. Anyone on my right side here would like to speak on this? Yes, if you'd come forward and introduce yourselves.
Hello, my name is George Swye. I'm a 54-year resident of the city, and a lot of this has taken our neighborhood kind of by surprise, what's happened in the last couple of months. First with the opioid clinic, and now with the marijuana thing, now finding out that a gentleman across the street running the other side of Hunter was approached by a crack dealer in the grocery store last week, another friend of mine's friend was approached by a crack dealer in the same grocery store. And I'm looking at these trends, and I just don't see how that we need the revenue that bad that we're going to, you know, bring all these drugs so close to these schools. Is there any way we could increase the distance from 250 feet from a residential area, or in more than 1,000 feet from a school? Because I talked to someone who lives in a city with these clinics, and they're not supposed to be standing outside smoking dope, but it happens every day. It's not enforced. I mean, is that, I mean, is this really the best we can do? We live in the era of technology. There's all sorts of businesses that the city can go after. Do we really have to turn Westland to drug land? Can't we just do a little better than that somehow, and keep this stuff away from our residential houses and our children? It doesn't have to be a race to the bottom, and that's what it seems like it's like, a race to the bottom. And you've got all these kids running around, and there's going to be people standing around smoking pot. You've got the plasma center now over in that strip mall over off Wildwood, where people go to sell their blood, and they get hundreds of dollars a month, and now the crack dealers are following them to there. And now you've got moms with little kids in shopping carts going into the grocery store with crack dealers in there. I mean, I'm setting the bar like barely above zero here. This is not asking much. We don't need the revenue that bad. I know you guys can't vote on that, it's not for you guys. I'm saying, but make it stricter, you know, we already have to deal with an opioid clinic now in our neighborhood, okay? And what's going to come along with that? We don't want THC or cannabinoids in our neighborhood. Yeah, money's great, but it's not that great. I think the safety of our children and the safety of our neighborhoods, keeping drug dealers out of our city is more important than bending over for these businessmen that are running in flashing dollar signs around in front of everybody's eyes. We don't want them. We don't want them, that's it. Extend those distances further away, make it safer. If you guys are really, or the city's really bent on bringing more drugs into the city and making it, you know, more of a drug-filled city for more revenue, at least make it stricter to protect the kids and the families in the neighborhoods, or else our property dies and they're going to go right down the toilet. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone on my left? Anyone on my left? Yes, would you identify yourself, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
My name's Eleanor Miller, and I've been a resident of Westland for 41 years. My question is, since apparently the Council's going to vote to opt-in, and I'd rather have them opt-out, I would appreciate it if they would just put it in the industrial area, and I'd like to know why was Ford Road picked as the spot to, you know, have one facility south of Ford, one facility north of Ford? I mean, it could be right next to each other, because they only have to be 5,000 feet away. Does anybody know why?
So I can't answer why, but I can give you an explanation of how this occurred. At the previous, well, let me back up a little bit about the 250 feet. So when we initiated these discussions 10 meetings ago, about three or four months ago, there was no distance separation requirement, and within the past month or so, the City Council decided to do 250 feet from any building wall of a facility to the nearest residential line. And then they decided to increase it more to do 250 from any property line to property line, which is more strict than the building wall to a property line. The only requirement that's written into the state law is the 1,000 feet away from any pre-existing school, so these two additions are something that the city picked to be more restrictive than the state law. Now, answering your question about how it was picked, the City Council at the last study session on Monday came to the determination that they don't want these two scattered in one part of town, so they decided, for some reason, I'm not sure why, maybe because it's the only state designated thoroughfare in Westland, however, that wasn't indicated, that they would separate the city using Ford Road. That's the only explanation that I can give to you right now. For you and the gentleman in the back who I spoke with today, I would encourage you to come to the City Council meeting on Monday. That is where, I believe, a lot more dialogue will be had, and you will have an opportunity to speak with the City Council, who has kind of taken the lead on this ordinance.
Well, I have emailed them.
Okay, great.
But I just wondered about Ford Road. You know, there's Cherry Hill, Warren, I mean.
Sure. Yeah, there's certainly several streets that run parallel to Ford Road that could have been chosen. I don't know why Ford Road was designated as the dividing line.
I still feel that the industrial, if you're going to vote it in, is the best place for it, because as the other gentleman said, that opioid treatment center is right in the residential, very close to a park, the ice rink, I don't know if you've all heard that, apparently, the ice rink, the park, the elementary, it's not a good situation. That's a different story, but this is now coming up, and it could be even more problems. So thank you.
No problem.
Thank you. Anyone else on my right? Yes, would you please come forward, identify yourself, please?
Hi, my name's Diane Fosse, and I've been living in Westland since August of 2006. And I just have a couple of questions, one of which, I was reading the ordinance, and I was wondering about, a comment in here about the folks that are applying for licenses having to demonstrate the ability to comply with the law. Do you know what that entails?
So we are not discussing that ordinance tonight, that's not on the table.
Okay. What about tax abatements? Are any of these licensees or businesses going to be granted tax abatements?
So I didn't want to just cut you off, I just wanted to disclaimer that we're not talking about that ordinance that you're reading tonight, that is the sole duty of the Council for that.
Okay.
We're talking about the zoning ordinance amendments. However, to answer the last question, I don't remember the first question, the last question is, there will no, there will not be any tax abatements or incentives for anyone that wants to do medical, or medical and recreational marijuana in the city of Westland.
That's a good thing.
All right, great.
That's all I have at this time, thank you.
So the gentleman in the yellow has my contact information, if he wants to share that with you, I'll be happy to answer the other question.
I contacted you through the website as well, thank you.
Great, okay.
Anyone else on the left? Anyone else? Anyone else on the right? Yes?
My name is Kim Ingram. I just wanted to make a comment of, sorry to bring this to this meeting here, but City Council told us at one of their council meetings, the reason they allowed this opioid situation to happen the way they did is because there was nobody here to voice their opinion. Had we been here to speak our voices before they did their vote at that point, maybe they would have made a different decision, which I do not think so. And they pretty much said, well, they just kind of went with your guys' vote. So here we are saying to you, be careful with what you do. We don't want this beautiful city destroyed. My husband has been here 30 years. I've only been here almost 20 years. We love the city. We want to enjoy our city. We want the safety of our city. I live right on Hunter Road. I'm sure you guys have heard, the lady on Hunter Road came here and called Channel 2 News out. I did, I was angry. Who do I go to? Who do I talk to? We brought this to you today so that we could let you guys know. Be careful with what you're doing. This is children. I didn't know you guys owned, the city of Westland owned the ice arena, until I started talking around the neighborhood, and I live right across from it. You guys just did beautiful work, you guys or whomever, fixing up the parks, fixing every park, even down in, what is it, Norway. Look at how great you're cleaning that up, getting rid of the blight there. Don't take this part of this area, bring this down as you're bringing other parts up. It's a huge mistake. I really think it is, and I don't think that's what anybody's intention is, but that's what we see happening. And all we can do is look to all of you, be it City Council, be it the zoning board, whomever, and go, please, be careful with all of your decisions. Act as if it is your own home you're making the decision on, not the city's. Your homes. It's your backyard. It's, you've got to look at it every day. You've got to walk your children or grandchildren through this park that may have this issue with this opioid clinic or this marijuana clinic, and I'm not against a marijuana clinic. I'm not against an opioid clinic. Location. Make sure we're safe. Make sure that when I go to the corner market, where a neighbor of mine went to the corner market, a man, not to say it'd be any different if it was a man or a woman, but it just happened to be a man, walked up to him to sell him crack, would not take no for an answer. Two police officers come from this side and this side, blocked my neighbor in, and goes, hey, he throws his hands up. I'm not doing anything. They're like, we're not here for you, we're here for him. That guy takes off running, another police officer comes in off of Ford Road, guy runs into his car, falls down, hits the ground, guy gets arrested for selling crack. Right here in the neighborhood, where the opioid center is right there, that plasma center is right there, don't put anything more in that area. Like they're saying, business district, keep it away from families. Please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone on my left? Okay. Anyone else on the right? Anyone else on the right? Mr. Ayew?
So, I mean, there was a lot said tonight. The City Council has been trying to protect not only the residential districts, but also the schools. We talked about buffering away from parks as well, and also public buildings, as well as City Hall. In chapter 27 that the City Council has been drafting, there is a location that is excluded from marijuana facilities being permitted to operate there, that is the city mall, or the Westland Mall location. It's about more of like a square area, in addition to the former Toys-A-Rus site, which is now Volunteers of America, that area is prohibited from having marijuana facilities. When you throw all of these distance separation requirements, again, I go back to being one of the more conservative cities in drafting this model. The 250 feet, because we're more of an urban-style feel city, we have our commercial businesses and districts that back up directly to residential, that share a property line with a residential zone property. So when you even say 25, 50, or even, we were talking in the early stages of no marijuana facilities can share a property line with a residentially zoned property, this is a lot more exclusive. Now you have to be 250 feet away from property line to property line, so that excludes any commercial property on all of these main roads that shares a backyard with any residential zone property. So it limits it very much into the commercial districts that have large parcels of land, most on the intersections of our city. I'm not going to be too descriptive of where the locations could be, because there are some business owners in the audience, but we feel, or the City Council feels, that they've drafted a conservative ordinance that does protect our schools and spreads these facilities out throughout the city. And again, there's only eight of these facilities, four or five of which are only going to be located in the industrial districts, and to be safe on the lawsuit end of it, we did decide to put the retail component facilities truly where they belong, in the retail commercial zoning districts. And again, the City Council put in these restrictions to protect the schools, to protect the neighborhoods, and to push 5,000 feet away from one. And that's what we, I'm presenting to you on behalf of the city council today.
Very good. No one else in the audience wish to speak? No one else?
One last comment?
Sure.
If I'm not mistaken, a football field is about 900 feet long. So we're talking less than this is a football field. Does that seem like a pretty good buffer to you guys from kinderbackers playing?
Why don't you come on up here?
Every time I watch Tom Brady win another Super Bowl, he drives his team down the field to win. That's more of a distance than that 250 feet from the schools and the little children who play, or the residential homes. I mean, it's nice that they made it 250, but if it's less than the distance of a football field, you know, is that really the best we can do? Can we make it 500 feet? Why less than a football field?
It's a thousand feet.
Thousand feet of the football field. Hundred yards times three.
The schools... So where does the 250 come in then?
Residential.
Okay, well, kids live in residencies, don't they? Where does somebody has kids playing in the backyard, and it's less than a football field away, and they see people smoking pot outside this place?
So you're not permitted to smoke or marijuana?
Which is, happens every day at clinics all over southeast Michigan. You just got to go talk to the people. I'll go take pictures of it, bring a show to you if you want. It's not enforced. It's not enforced. You can YouTube it, you can look it up. People stand outside and smoke pot.
Well, sir, I was just commenting on the fact that it was a thousand feet from schools. There's something that you have to bring into the council.
Right, I understand from the school, but children do live in the homes.
There's something that you will have to bring into the council, ask the council...
If you definitely wanted to go, I'll be there.
I'll be there, believe me. We have to, you know, we're having this whole gay play. We've got to watch everything, you know? Every increment of everything is watched now, because we don't know what else is going to come to our city. Back in the 60s, we were chartered as a retail city, right? We don't belong. And then as the 80s came around, we built the industrial park out off Hicks Road, right? What is our identity going to be right now? Well, it's obvious what it's turning into. Section 8 housing and drugs. That's going to be the new image of Westland. Congratulations.
I believe that's true, but if there are areas...
Uh, yeah. Go up, go up to the shopping mall, and get, have a crack at it come up to you, maybe you'll change your mind.
I understand that, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Ayew?
Yes, sir.
Anything else you need from us?
No, I just, I mean, the state has created rules, they've created regulations, they've created an application process, they're ready to open this application process, I believe, in the first week of November, or first week of January. We're not looking to move that fast. However, to be proactive, we've been working with the council, as I stated numerous times, to draft this ordinance. We feel it is a more conservative model-type ordinance that we've spent about four months reviewing and putting together. And this might not be the end of it. Council gets to look at it on Monday. They may make some changes to it, they may not. So that's, that's really all I have to say at this point about this. If it's, we've been talking to folks throughout the state, a couple agencies, intergovernmental agencies and things like that, like MML, and they say that within a year or two, this is going to be something that's regulated like a commercial activity or an industrial activity similar to all other types of activities. And it's better for a city to have something on the books today and not fall into whatever the state does in a couple of years. So that's another perspective of looking at it. And going back to the more conservative model that we have, we can tell the state if they ever do do that, that, hey, we have this on the books. It was created by our city council, it's law, and this is what we're going to follow, similar to all the Airbnbs and things like that, that are going on right now, too. But that's another story. That's, that's all I have.
And as far as us, we were fact-finding. That's what we're doing. We're not making any kind of determination, we're just having a public hearing.
No, sir. So, all of the audience members here today, and I spoke to them, some of them earlier today, the voting to adopt this into law is going to be happening on Monday, October 7th, at 7:00 p.m. in this room, so I encourage everyone to attend, whether they're supportive or in opposition.
You had another comment, ma'am?
I just have a quick comment.
Could you come to the podium if you have a question, please?
I understood that we can opt out, and then we wouldn't be involved in all of this. The state wouldn't come back and say, well, you got to have the marijuana facilities. Is that correct?
So, all the cities after the 2018 ballot initiative passed were automatically opted in. And if you wanted to, as a city, you could opt out. Some cities opted out, some cities opted out clause with the sunset, or whatever. However, if we do opt out, it doesn't necessarily mean that the state, at the state level, is going to say that you, this is treated like any other type of retail activity, and someone can come in and set up shop if we don't have ordinances on the books to regulate it. I mean, we're talking about years down the line, but we could opt out, if that was your question. We can opt out.
Right. And at this point, nobody knows the future. It might be best to opt out, simply to not have more problems.
So, so we, that was an option discussed with the city council, and there was no intention at the city council level to opt out.
Okay, thank you.
Have a comment?
Yes, sir.
No, it, I know there's nothing else. It appears that the city council has been pretty circumspect with their ideas and trying to make sure that the city is, is safe. And I don't see anything wrong with, you know, going further with this right now. Therefore, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Well, before you close the hearing, can I make a comment to our audience?
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Wilson?
All right, then. Because I'm a person that actually does research, I mean, and they, I mean, my colleagues do, too, but I am kind of one of those dig-deep people. On the state of Michigan's website, there is the emergency rules for adult-use marijuana establishments. This calls out all the MCLs that affects it, that the city of Westland, in their presentation to us, is also citing. Go into the states, because it's a lot more in-depth, tells about the taxation, how they feel like the tax papers, everything else, the application itself. It's not extremely thick. I mean, it's like 64 pages, but you can pull this down off the state's website. They also have quite a bit of information. There is a marijuana policy project that you can pull down, the 2019 emergency rules. And then there is one for Michigan Medical Marijuana Dispensary Law and Licensing Procedures. And that was dated June 22nd, 2019. So these are all laws that are already on the Michigan books. If you did not go in and you did not attend any of the meetings that they had for the marijuana ordinances and laws for the state, for the city of Westland. Also in that, on the homepage, they have where the marijuana hearings were held, and all the special, special hearings. There's also that chapter of the charter that they want to introduce. It's charter, it's chapter 27. It is on the front page. You can, you can go through and read all that all this week, and be ready to hit them on Monday if you want to. I mean, I'm, I'm just giving you the information so that you know that the city of Westland, they did put through, and put up a conservative, rather conservative...
Who's there to enforce these laws?
Sir, you will have to ask the council that. I'm just here to give you just this...
That wasn't part of your, what you said?
All right, sir, sir, let her finish. We didn't interrupt you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just here to, I'm just going to, I'm just giving you some information that if you want to learn about what's going on with this marijuana issue, it's on the first page, the covered, the homepage of the city site, westland, cityofwestland.com. And it's right there on the side, and all you got to do is hit it, and every hearing that they had, every special, every special meeting that they had on it is there. And the ordinance, not the ordinance, I'm sorry, yeah, the ordinance number, chapter number 27 is there. So this is what this meeting is about, is this right here. It's not, we're not, we cannot answer the questions about police patrolling, and, because these things have not been created. That's what this is, to start discussing and how to set up this ordinance, and the restrictions that these, call them manufacturers, growers, provisioners, that they're going to have to follow. And that's through the state and the cities, well, our city. So...
Thank you. Commissioner Williams?
I, I guess my comments are going to be to the point regarding our role and our responsibility. I really appreciate your voice. I want to say that, and your concern. I have traveled this country and seen a lot of things. However, I think it's really important that we don't stretch it to the point where it becomes a fight. I think your intent is to make sure safety is the primary concern. I also think that the instances you cited are contrary to this, actually give credence to why you need some controls. Crack cocaine changed the world. I work in a, in a, in a business that have seen young people get destroyed, families get destroyed. So I, I think we've got a bigger responsibility as citizens, and we're all citizens of this community, and your passion and your concerns are mine. I'm also not the kind of person that will pass the buck. We've got a responsibility as a planning commission, and we stay within those guidelines. Those guidelines don't include enforcement, they don't include passing the laws, but it says, if a person, or if a business has the legal right, we should not deter that. Unless those things change, we will stick to our mission. So I really think it's important that your voice be heard, and I want to validate that. I run a child welfare organization. And the biggest issues we deal with are beyond some of the issues, the neglect, abuse, but it goes beyond segmenting people. Section 8 can be a good thing if it's done correctly, it's not a bad thing. But when you start having it misused and abused, like anything else, whether it's a speed limit on Ford Road, whether it's a driveway that needs to be filtered, whether it's how people take care of their front lawns, those are all human issues, and I really appreciate your comments. But again, our responsibility will not be compromised. I won't say, go do this, go do this. We will stay within our mission, and our mission is to plan, stay within accordance of the law as it relates to planning commission. And, and all of these individuals are committed to doing that. So I don't want to diminish that, and that comment that was made, we followed their guidelines. That is not our role. I'm sure they said that, someone said that, but you won't hear me passing responsibility on the city council, the state police, anyone else. I have to be a good neighbor, and if there's an issue in my neighborhood, the neighborhood has to also take it. I don't depend totally on police, but when we need them, I want them to be there. And Westland's police are very, very accommodating from that concern, even in your example. The fact that they pulled up that quickly speaks to the kind of enforcement we have here. Again, I don't justify it. The fact that crack cocaine, people can drive in any community now, I think the more we resist those type of things, the better we'll be as a community. So I just want to go on record with that, and saying that I heard you.
Thank you. Commissioner Foxx?
Briefly, I just want to say that I agree with both my two colleagues here. Our role as planning is not to say we can have marijuana in the city and put out all the laws. All we have to do is just pass it on to city council. The ordinance is a great, at least there's some structure here, but it's not our job to say yes or no for the city. I am not the person to agree with the marijuana coming into Westland. I'd rather see it in another city. I'm not sure how it would work in Westland, and I, probably if I were one of the city council members, I would be voting no for it. That's just my opinion. But I do know that we have to move it on to them, so I will be voting to move it to city council for their, their opinion and approval on it.
Commissioner Grinney?
Okay.
Commissioner Rapp report?
Yes. So I'd like to echo some of the, some of the statements that I've heard from the, from the panel up here, specifically with regard to appreciation for, for the commentary that we've actually heard from our, from our gathered audience today. Whether or not we can agree fully with your statements, we definitely appreciate and we definitely hear you. I assure you that when we, we are, we're not professional politicians up here, we're not elected officials. We're chosen because we represent the populace, and we do make our decisions based on what we, what we would want in our own backyards, what we would expect to see. But we also have to keep in mind what, what the rights of individuals, what our decisions would affect rights of individuals. And with that, with that in mind, I do have a couple of questions for the, for the administration, just to see if I can personally get a little bit of clarity on some of the issues with this opting out that I heard. Elaine, is it Elaine?
Eleanor.
Eleanor, sorry. Ms. Miller, bring up. So, with respect to opting out, as I understood it, as the law currently stands, considering that marijuana has been made legal in the state of Michigan, therefore it is no longer, the use of which is no longer a criminal, a criminal act.
Correct.
It's been stated that, that communities may opt out of an opportunity to make restrictive laws. Is that correct?
That's also correct. I want to backtrack a little bit. It's, it's been decriminalized at the state level.
Correct. So, at the federal level, we're aware that it's still... So, now, given a, given a future, let's, let's, let's explore a hypothetical where we did opt out. And we, at this moment, said, no, we really don't want to institute these restrictive, these, I don't really want to say it would, restrictive, that seems a little disingenuous. We don't want to set our expectations in our, for, for allowing this commerce to exist in our, in our community. We instead just want to say completely, no, can't happen at all. Now, moving forward from that decision, if later the, the, the state legislature redacted, rescinded that, that ability for, for, for our community to say, no, we don't want this at all, would, would I be correct in assuming that we would have lost our opportunity to be restrictive in where we allowed this to happen?
So, the answer is yes. The state would then trump whatever laws, and they're not likely to have restrictive laws like we do, but their laws would trump our laws in that case. And then there's a second way to look at it, too, which happened in Pontiac during the, I believe, primary, or maybe last year's election, to where they decided to opt out as a city, the legislative body, the city council decided to opt out. And then there was a citizen group that put a local initiative on the ballot, similar to the state citizen initiative, and they decided to put in on a ballot that we want marijuana facilities in the city, and obviously it's not going to be crafted as well as this document, and it obviously wasn't. And they got it passed, so it's sort of like a free-for-all over there, and now the city's trying to ring it back in and play catch-up and things like that. So that's another negative component that can come out of it. So that's another negative component that can come out of it, too. Citizen groups organizing this year's election, and putting it on the ballot, getting approved, and then, and then we can't do anything about it at that point.
Now, I know that the administration has, has discussed kind of at length the, the distances that they were, that they were trying to, to, to set. I know this was brought up by, by Mr. George.
Right.
As he wanted, I, I don't know if he's done any research on the, on the distances, or, I mean, obviously, we, we can, we can say what, what distances reapers look like with regard to other distances. But I know that the administration did a thing, or I, I believe that they did a thing, where they set these distances by figuring out, by encircling those areas that we were restricting, so that we figured out exactly where the, where we were leaving open to, to these, to these businesses to be located. And to my understanding, the last I, I paid attention to the, to the state of play with regard to setting these distances, the way that we have them set up is already very restrictive for where these things could actually locate. And if we were to be more restrictive, that would completely eliminate them entirely from being able to be in the, in the, in the thing, which would mean that we would be subject to a, to a lawsuit because we would be opting in, but still completely denying the possibility.
So we feel that right now, we're actually being pretty, like I said, I mean, I know it's not a secret, I already said it, we're being really conservative, the 250-foot buffer from residential, and again, going back to you having to understand the way our city's laid out as more of an urban area with these commercial shopping districts directly sharing a boundary with residential. Right now, the way it's laid out structurally in the ordinance, it wipes away a majority of our commercial districts. And we feel, obviously, that there could be two that could locate, but if you were to increase these boundaries, I think the word they are looking for is we get in an issue of exclusionary zoning. Yes, we say that we're allowing it, but are we really? So that, yeah, you do run into that issue, yes.
So we're kind of in a, if, if my line of questioning here is actually running me to a conclusion, it almost sounds like we're at a catch-22 where if, where we're, we're choosing to, to make these rules so that we don't get inadvertently put into a position where we lose the ability to make rules. However, we'd like to be more restrictive, but if we were more restrictive than we currently are, we would be opening ourselves up to a, to a lawsuit, a potential lawsuit, because we were actually, we were basically misrepresenting that we were, that we were allowing this, this thing so that we could control it, but still, in fact, de facto, not allowing it at all.
Perfect.
So, I mean, I, I certainly, and I want to reiterate that I, I appreciate and I certainly agree that, that there are certain things that we don't want thrown in the faces of people that obviously shouldn't have these things thrown in their faces, and we certainly don't want to disadvantage any of our, any of our neighbors. But I think it's incumbent upon us as responsible citizens not to make, not to make harsh judgments without understanding how those, how those decisions are being made, and not to make false equivalencies between legal activities that we would like to, to control their, their, how they're actually pursued, and those that are illegal that we would like never to have. So, and the, the, the last thing I'd like to say is I'm, I'm a little disappointed in the, in the characterization of the, of the rehabilitation clinic that we approved as a, as an opioid clinic. It is not. It is a medical, it is a medical facility for people to get on the right track. It is not a place for people to go and shoot up and be awful human beings. It is for people who want willingly participating in a program to get themselves straight. And for crying out loud, if, if that's not a thing that we'd like to, to teach our children that, that you're not garbage just because you made a bad choice.
We never said that, for the.
This is my time, sir, and, and this is my opinion, please.
By a grade school. By a grade school. Forgot to mention that.
I believe that this is a, that it, this is a lesson that, this is, this is a, a good thing for us to have in our communities.
You're a grade school.
By a grade school. By a cemetery.
In a grade school, four or 500 children.
How far away?
1300 feet to the foot.
Gentlemen, hey, sir, please. Nobody interrupted you. Let, let everybody speak that chooses to.
Well, I, you know, I want to put in my mouth. Also, just so you guys know, federally against the law, federally, it's against the law to sell marijuana. The feds are not enforcing it. So when we talk about enforcement, keep in mind, federally, it's against the law to grow and sell marijuana. That's why I make you guys aware of that, because no one mentioned that here tonight.
Listen to it.
I didn't hear it.
We've mentioned it a couple times, sir.
I didn't hear it. Federally, it's against.
You only hear what you want to hear, sir.
No.
And nobody interrupted you when you were talking.
We have to fight.
Why are you interrupting us while we're talking?
Because this gentleman here is putting words in my mouth that he's saying.
That's being very disrespectful.
He's not mentioning that this opioid clinic is no grade school.
Enough, enough. Mr. Rappaport, you have anything else to comment?
I believe that actually does more than make my point.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Spiezak, supported by Commissioner Williams to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Roll call, vote to move the marijuana business ordinance amendment for the zoning ordinance to the city council with a recommendation to approve Durante.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sharp.
Yes.
Spiezak.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Wilson.
Yes.
Seven zero, the motion carries.
We want to thank everybody for coming. I know this is a, it's a hard subject, and I don't think it's a subject that can be clarified or solved in, in any one meeting, but be sure to go to the city council and voice your thoughts. But the thing of it is, we all have the right to disagree. None of us have the right to be disagreeable. So remember that when you make your comments. You will get a lot farther in life if you disagree politely.
Sure.
Motion to adjourn?
Support.
Motion by Commissioner Wilson, uh, Williams.